The time has arrived, and I appreciate seeing so many smiley, happy faces out there on a Monday evening. So the time is seven o'clock, and this is the Granville County Board of Commissioners for Monday, October 21st, 2024, and I will call it to order. We've got a change coming up on our agenda this evening. We're going to be pulling item number nine, which is our tax matters, off of the agenda, just as a note of housekeeping. And once our attorney gets back up, we'll start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance with Commissioner Russ May.
Let's pray. Dear Father, thank you so much for your Son, Jesus, and thank you for all that you do for us and each day that you give us, Lord, and the blessings you bestow us. Lord, let all our decisions tonight be made with clarity. Let us be kind in what we say and what we do. Let us be fair in all our decision-making processes. Bless our county, Lord; bless those who work for our county; bless those in the western part of the state, Lord, and look after them at this most difficult time. And destruction that's out there is just, it's almost impossible to say in words. Bless those people; bless those counties; bless those local governments as they try to reconstruct and put back together what has been taken apart. Bless his body; may we honor you tonight in what we do and how we do it. In Christ's most glorious name we pray. Amen.
All right, Commissioners, we've got our consent agenda as the next item. And you've had opportunity to review. What is the preference of the board on those items?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Cozart, seconded by Commissioner Wilford. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. We've got our introductions, recognitions, and presentations, and I'm going to hand it off to my fellow Army veteran, Commissioner Russ May, to handle this Operation Greenlight for Veterans this year. And if you, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is Mr. Spees, A.J. Spees, with our Veteran Services.
Good evening, Chair, Karen. Commissioners, according to the VAG geographical distribution of the VA, the GDX report, Granville County roughly has 3,200 veterans. This includes not only the veterans receiving any VA types, but VA education as well as Using this report alone shows Granville County roughly comprises of 5% of veterans. These veterans have answered the call to service for their country. I ask that the county residents and businesses place green light outside their homes and businesses during the month of November to show our veterans our support for their sacrifices and service to this country and community. At this time, I respectfully request the Granville County Board of Commission adopt the resolution supporting Operation Greenlight for veterans.
Mr. Spees, as a Veteran Service Officer for the county, thank you for your service. Thank you, first of all, for your service to our nation while in the Navy. We thank you, and thank you for the service that you do for our county every day on behalf of our veterans. It's most appreciated. This is a resolution supporting Operation Greenlight for veterans. Whereas the residents of Granville County hold deep respect, admiration, and gratitude for the men and women who have selfishly served our nation and community in the armed services, whose contributions and sacrifices have been essential in preserving the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Granville County seeks to honor individuals who have made tremendous sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and who continue to serve our community and organizations such as the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious groups, civil service, and as county Veteran Services Officers in 29 states, helping fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian life each year with the estimated 20% increase in the near future, as studies show that 44% to 72% of these individuals experience significant stress during this transition, placing them at an elevated risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and burrows to participate in Operation Greenlight for veterans, Granville County recognizes the sacrifices made by our United States military personnel and believes they deserve special recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved that with this designation as Operation Greenlight for Veterans County, for Granville County veterans, Granville County declares the period from October 21st, 2024, through the month of November, 2024, including Veterans Day, November 11th, 2024, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform as they transition from military, active-duty military. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Greenlight, Granville County encourages its citizens to uphold the patriotic tradition of honoring all who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve our freedom by displaying green lights in the windows of their homes or businesses during the month of November, 2024. This is presented to you by the Granville County Commissioners and signed by Timothy Karen, Chair, Granville County Board of Commissioners. I can't pass up on the opportunity. As a fellow veteran, and particularly to the veterans that served during times of conflict and war, I know that we cannot put in words those sacrifices they made. I can also put into words the time that I've seen you work with our veterans and how that service has grown in our county through your efforts. I want to personally thank you on behalf of our board for going the extra mile and making this happen. Thank you.
To place a peace poll. If you've not heard of a peace poll before, Charissa, one of our members of the Oxford Rotary Club will pass out a flyer. She's actually the president of Oxford, but yeah, thank you for that, Charles. Charles is here. Xavier's here, and Sue Hinman is here. What we would like to do is place this poll next to the courthouse. I did bring a photograph that's coming around. If you look at the main doors of the courthouse, it would be on the left-hand side in that little garden area. Just to give you a little bit of background, there are over 250,000 peace poles throughout the world, placed by the Rotary Clubs. And we would like to add ours to Granville County. So we're asking your permission to do that at no cost to the county or anybody else.
I appreciate you coming forward tonight. I have the photo of the courthouse.
Wonderful.
And I'm assuming that you're talking about putting it in this Lagrasia area next to the flagpole?
Yes.
Okay.
In that area. In that area.
Because we don't debate during public comment, we will get back to you with an answer to your question. I'm sure that it'll be favorable. But anyways.
The sooner the better.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
One other thing, ACIM. Sue Hinman retired from ACIM about six weeks ago. Just to remind everybody here in the audience that we are holding a retirement party for Sue next Tuesday, the 29th, at the Orange Street Community Center on the 29th.
Hours from?
Orange Street Community Center.
6:30.
6:30. I think it's 6:30. I haven't got my... 6:30, Sue?
It is the 29th for sure.
The 29th. 5:30.
5:30, 7:30, okay. October 29th, 5:30, 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Retirement from ACIM of Commissioner Sue Hinman. Well, she would just not be Commissioner. She'd be plain old Sue at the...
She'd be plain old Sue. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers that have signed up this evening. So our next item on our agenda is our Sheriff's Matters. And we've got one of our chiefs coming down. And the purpose of this is for the Granville County Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board of Commissioners to adopt the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Fiscal Year 25 Grant Resolution. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. This is the third iteration of this project, the Region Four Law Enforcement Liaison, the position I hold with the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This position promotes traffic safety efforts throughout Region Four, North Hampton County, Halifax County, Warren County, Nash County, Wilson County, Franklin County, Granville County, and Vance County. The things in this grant go forth to help us make our highways and roadways more safer, things such as radars and lidars. And there's a special item in this year's project, which is called a seatbelt convincer. A seatbelt convincer is a device that is utilized to simulate a low-speed collision and the need and the proper use of safety belts. It is always a hit whenever we go and do community functions. We currently have one in the region, and that one is in bad repair. And so this grant will allow us to purchase a new one to continue those efforts.
Yeah, we will. Commissioners, you have a recommendation before you from our Sheriff, Robert Fountain, which recommends the approval of the local government resolution from North Carolina Government's Highway Safety Program and the amount of $55,000 grant funding.
So I have questions, if you don't mind. So it is a grant, so that means no money comes in front out of the county's funds, right?
No. It's a reimbursement program. The county spends the money first, and then it's reimbursed.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as the money comes back. And the second thing was, when I read this, I did not understand what a seatbelt thing, whatever it is, was, and that was my question. It's what is it? Why do we need it? You've explained it perfectly. Thank you very much.
Hey, Chief. Who reimburses us for our overtime?
This is not an overtime grant.
I know, but does any of this require you guys go out and use it, right?
Yes, but that'll, any, so I am the Region Four LEL. I don't get overtime. So if anybody is utilizing it, it'll be me. And yeah, so we would not employ any sheriff's office deputy to use this and create overtime.
That was my question is, because I think the other program, did you have a previous grant that you guys, you're gonna have to walk me back. What did we approve in July?
So this is essential in July. So I wasn't involved in that.
Yeah, in July, the office reached notification, but didn't we just approve a governor's safety grant?
Last year.
Okay.
So this is a, this goes every fiscal year. So the only difference between this iteration and the previous one is the addition of the seatbelt convincer.
Got it. Okay.
No, there's no overtime in this project.
All right. So when we go out and do these governor's safety programs with other counties and municipalities, we're not, we're not using overtime?
So that's something totally different? So I'm talking about the Region Four LEL program. That's separate and apart from any type of GHSP. So GHSP has traffic enforcement efforts throughout the year. They coincide with major holidays, like we have a big holiday push coming forth. So let's say, for instance, if Wake County invited the sheriff's office to attend an operation in Wake County, that's separate and apart from this GHSP grant.
Well, then in that case, who pays for that overtime?
Whatever funds, budget line item they come from.
Okay, so within budget line?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's, any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation from the sheriff.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Cozart, seconded by Commissioner Jay, that we approve the recommendation coming from our sheriff and that we authorize the county manager to execute the contract once finalized and reviewed by the county attorney. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
We have polled item number nine, so that'll take us to item number 10. And we have Mr. Scott Phillips, our Director of Development Services, here this evening with us tonight. And the purpose of this is to request and consider amending the existing unit-priced engineering consulting services agreement needed to finalize the necessary repairs, modifications, and permitting to the Triangle North Granville Sewer Pump Station, Gravity Sewer, and Force Main. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Chairman Karen. Granville County Commissioners, first, I'd like to introduce Andy Lamb. He's our senior project manager with McGill. He's here to answer any kind of technical questions if some should come up with this presentation. But as you said, this request considers amending an existing unit-priced engineering consulting services agreement needed to finalize the necessary repairs, modifications, and permitting for the Triangle North Granville Sewer Pump Station, Gravity Sewer, and Force Main. In October 2023, Granville County entered into agreement with McGill to focus on the deficiencies of the existing sewer infrastructure located at Triangle North. The assessment focused on issues related to the North Carolina Department Environmental Quality Permit Submittal, construction deficiencies, system deterioration due to age, and updates needed to conform to the City of Oxford's current utility requirements. The sewer infrastructure, originally constructed and substantially completed in 2007 for the Granville Business Park, was never commissioned for service and has sat idle for 17 years. Furthermore, permanent power for the substation was never established, making operational maintenance of the facility extremely difficult for the mechanical and electrical components of the station. McGill associates' detailed findings are outlined in their attached assessment reports. In addition, we have provided a brief summary of the deficiencies as follows. Upon review of the original NC Deaner qualities, North Carolina Department Environmental Quality Permit Submittal, neither the pump station, force main, or gravity sewer were ever finalized. Testing, certification, and production of as-built drawings are needed to finalize the permitting documents. The gravity outfall, consisting of approximately 6,100 linear feet of 18-inch pipe and supporting manholes, appear to be in good condition. The assessment recommends miscellaneous repairs needed to replace broken collar risers and securing cast-iron manhole covers in various locations. Groundwater infiltration was observed within one of the manholes, but that has been since repaired in order to dry out the lift station's wet well. The Force Main, consisting of approximately 4,700 linear feet of 12-inch pipe, also appears to be in good condition. The report does indicate the need to install three air relief valves and associated piping. Pressure testing of a line will be done once the deficiencies are corrected and the pump station is operational. The pump station is got a 12-ton on-site crane, which will require some rewiring and replace another lifting hoist, but otherwise the structural capacity of the crane appears to be in good condition. The electrical components have been inspected visually and tested under the operation of a standby generator. This testing was limited since permanent power is currently not available. A final determination of the automatic transfer switch function and the pump control configuration will be done once the permanent power is established. The pump station controls will also need to be outfitted with a supervisory-controlled data acquisition or SCADA system matching the City of Oxford's current utility standards. The pump station pumps have been removed and their conditions have been evaluated. Although the condition of the pumps appear to be in good working condition, there is concern of the pump's performance due to their age and the period of time submerged in water. It's our recommendation to replace the pumps. The pump station wet well indicates area of groundwater leakage. Recommendations needed to correct this issue include treating and resealing the existing concrete riser joints, and grouting and sealing the interior of the lift station's wet well walls with an epoxy coating. The cost to correct these deficiencies noted for the pump station and supporting infrastructure to bring to the City of Oxford standard is estimated to be somewhere between $500,000 and $750,000. Although this estimate may change slightly as additional work is understood, we feel the cost to correct this is within our approved project ordinance budget. This request is to consider an agreement amendment to provide the services outlined in McGill's proposal dated October 3rd, 2024. The proposal includes the following task. Additional design services need to develop technical plans and material and method specifications for the renovation of the existing sewage pump station, gravity outfall, and force main. The design focuses on the pump station's design focus for the pump station will be bring to the city of Oxford's requirements for acceptance. Permitting assistance in preparing and submitting an NCDQ permitting package for the overall system. Bid assistance in obtaining construction bids to execute the construction dictated by the final design, and construction administration services for a period of no more than 180 days. This would include site visits, monthly meetings, technical coordination, field checks for compliance with plans and specifications, record drawings, and coordination of acceptance into the City of Oxford's systems ownership. The total estimated service cost for this proposal is $247,350. Funding for this service is included within the Triangle North Project, Triangle North Granville Project Ordinance. I can answer any questions if you should have any.
Scott, the city will own this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a recommendation before us.
Yeah, the Granville County Development Services Director recommends awarding the unit-priced engineering service agreement amendment to McGill and Associates for an estimated amount of $247,350, and authorize the county attorney to finalize the contract and the county manager to execute the contract document.
Any questions, sorry? So you asked a question, did the city own it?
The city will.
Yeah, can you explain it to me, since we're developing the infrastructure? It's probably a very simple answer, but...
At the point that the commissioning is done and the documents are provided, the City of Oxford will take it within their system. Their water sewer utility system.
Then it will be theirs.
And it'll be theirs to maintain.
Got it. That's, that was what I wanted to know.
And that's where I was going with it, once this...
Same as the water line that we're stalling right now down Tabs and Triangle North Drive.
We're simply getting it up to standard so they can take it over.
That's correct.
It's customary when a developer, in this case, it's the county, puts in an asset that's involving water and sewer, that they turn it over to the authority that's running it for ongoing maintenance and repair. You've heard the recommendation. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Mr. Phillips.
I second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Rob Wilford, seconded by Commissioner May. Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is an appointment for the VIA Health Region Four Board, and the purpose of this is to reappoint Commissioner Russ May and Lisa Harrison to the VIA Health Board, We certainly can. We have a recommendation before us to reappoint Commissioner Russ May and Granville Vance Public Health Director Lisa Harrison to the VIA Health Region Four Board.
I'll make a motion to approve both. And I'll second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Gooch, seconded by Commissioner Wilford, to make those appointments. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign? And the motion carries. Thank you for your service on that board, Russ. Commissioner May, excuse me. And that'll take us all the way down to item number 12, which is our county manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I just have a couple of brief things I wanted to say tonight. I wanted to particularly appreciate the efforts of various county departments to offer assistance to counties in the western part of the state. In particular, the sheriff's office has sent out personnel, equipment, and supplies. Emergency management has made multiple trips, sending personnel and equipment. 911, our 911 center was answering calls on the day of and for a week after out of Mitchell County. There were many 911 centers that were down around the state, and those calls are being routed here, and then basically routed back to first responders there from here. Animal Control has sent personnel and equipment. DSS is actually just ramping up, helping with a remote call center to make sure that people out there can continue accessing their benefits. To my knowledge, and there may be more, but we've, we have been helping in Buncombe County, Mitchell County, McDowell County, and Henderson County in some fashion. And I would add to that, although I don't know as much about all of the different efforts, the wide variety of community-driven efforts coming out of Granville County for the western part of the state, including significant ones organized by our volunteer fire departments. And I'm just proud to be associated with a county where both the county organization and the community are so supportive of other areas of the state that need our help.
And next, we've got our county attorney, Mr. Wren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a matter on this evening, tonight, for approval of real property transfer and adoption of Declaration of Covenants for the development of the Advanced Manufacturing Center at Triangle North Granville Business Park. The purpose of this is to approve transfer of real property from the Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation to Vance Granville Community College and to establish updated covenants for the Triangle North Business Park, facilitating the construction of a new center for advanced manufacturing. As you all know, title was held by Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation, but Granville County is the real underlying interest owner in the property. It paid for the property and turned it over to Carter as part of a development agreement so that we could get the Tier One tax treatment for the park and also participate in the Four County Regional Economic Development Corporation scheme. So Vance Granville Community College received an $11,500,000 legislative appropriation in the 2023-2024 North Carolina state budget for the construction of a center for advanced manufacturing at the Triangle North Business Park. The attached deed that we're requesting approval of transfers approximately 10.25 acres of real property located on the north side of the property from the Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation to Vance Granville Community College pursuant to a development agreement with Granville County. This property transfer reflects a change in the location of the center from the south side of the park to the north side. So this will be the first lot as you come in to the, on your left, down Triangle North Drive. It's only 10.25 acres and leaves the remainder of the property available for development. The attached Declaration of Covenants imposes an updated set of covenants for the first phase of the Triangle North Business Park. Future phases of the park can be included in the covenants later, but won't be included until the next year. Future phases of the park can be included in the covenants later, but won't be included with this first set. Among other things, the covenants establish a property owners association that will be responsible for the collection of fire protection fees to be paid to the city of Oxford for fire protection services in the park. Those are based on a valuation of fifteen cents per hundred on the real property valuation. Following approval of the transfer and the Declaration of Covenants by the board, which transfer and covenants have already been approved by the Carter Regional Economic Development Corporation Board, the property owners association will be formed and the property transferred to Vance Granville Community College for construction of the Advanced Manufacturing Center. Draft articles, articles of incorporation and bylaws are also attached for the property owners association. It is recommended that the board approve the property transfer of approximately ten-point-two-five acres to Vance Granville and adopt the Declaration of Covenants. And I believe I indicated that the bylaws and and articles of incorporation are attached. Those, as I recall, are not attached. That was a type of. So I'd be happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
Do any members of the board have any questions for our attorney? Seeing none, what's?
Well, I do have one. So, Mr. Attorney, so this does have to be done in order for them to get this this grant? Am I correct?
So, yes, the deed has to be transferred, and if the deed is going to be transferred, the covenants need to attach to the property at the time of the transfer. So there's no issue about whether or not the the covenants properly apply to that track?
Great question. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation and transfer to ten-point-two-five acres to Vance Granville Community College with the adoption of updated Declaration of Covenants, and that allows for formation of property owners association with the subsequent development of the Center for Advanced Manufacturing.
Second, Mr. Jim.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Gooch, seconded by Commissioner Cozart. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney, anything else?
I have nothing else. We do have a closed session for economic development, nothing else for open session?
Right. Okay. So we've got our presentations by county board members, and we're going to start with Commissioner Sue Hinman.
Well, thank you very much, sir. I was very, very, it was a pleasure to be able to do both the Masonic Home Parade this year, which was kind of short because we couldn't go down the main street of in Oxford because of the construction. So we just actually went around the Masonic Home there, and there were a lot of people there. In fact, well, I'm going to have to talk to whoever supplies our candy, but we were almost out of candy just doing that parade. And then we turned around and left real quickly and went down to Creedmore to the Fireman's Parade, and we were able to do that and throw candy out there. And it was, and we should have taken two cars because we had poor Mr. Gooch in the back all by himself, and he couldn't even see out the back door. So anyway, it was it was awesome to get to do both parades and to see all these people come out for this. So thank you very much for letting us do that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cozart?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I too had a wonderful time there at the Masonic Home. It was a great celebration, and even though I was there somewhat with smart start, you could say, it was still just so good to see the alumni and see all the tremendous support for the Masonic Home. I also want to say I attended a wonderful event on Saturday evening at the Orange Street Community Center, and I surely want to thank the board there for working so hard to improve the facility. And of course, Scott, thank you so much. You've been there with them through a lot of things. And they had a fundraiser that was very successful. I understand today, close to twenty-five thousand dollars, and this board has been so kind to allow them to rent that facility for a dollar a year. I think this arrangement has been so helpful. So I congratulate the Orange Street Community Center Board of Directors for their hard work. It was a wonderful, wonderful program. Also, the school aides on meeting the other day, the school board had some awfully difficult decisions ahead, and I want to thank our board for, you know, their support and working with them because nothing is easy, and so many decisions may have a good side, but there may be a bad side as well. I also want to let everyone know I'm very excited. The childcare industry is in a real tough season, and Franklin and Granville went smart start through the support of so many with the Ducky Derby, the fundraiser, two fundraisers, Ducky Derby and the Timeout Tuesday. They're preparing, we're preparing to give out scholarships and give out small mini grants to assist our childcare centers during this difficult time. So I'm really grateful to everyone who has supported anything with that. And finally, I just want to say thank you all so much for making last meeting so special. When I walked in today, I couldn't help but think about all the, all the occurrences and how things played out. But again, that night, I was probably not able to thank you adequately. So thank you so much for the very special honor that you allowed me to receive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner May?
Yes, Mr. Cummings, you have those, yeah. I want to share with you my experiences last week going to western North Carolina. I went with a group of young men that just inspired me. They were incredible helping these families up there. The communities we were at was near Chimney Rock, Lake Lure, and we helped communities within that area. Just switch to next, that picture you're seeing there, go back one, two, I'm sorry. That picture you're seeing there, that is actually Chimney Rock. And we were actually able to go out there to see it firsthand. Where you see the red object ahead of you, just next to that is the road that used to be there, but next to that would have been where the lake, excuse me, the river used to be. And as you can see, it's no longer there. The roads throughout the areas that we went looked like beach roads with piled up trees and debris, ten, twelve, twenty feet tall for miles and miles and miles. Next one, please. You can see a truck there, it's a pickup truck, it's a Ford F-150 that's buried in that picture. That's another shot of of the Chimney Rock going back through the city where it's the water came up, just literally covered the entire area. Next picture, please. Again, the first picture on your left, that is looking back at Chimney Rock, it's about a thirty to twenty-five to thirty-foot drop. That is a parking lot that's been completely taken away. And and then down below, and next picture, please. If there's any more. I'm good if you can show, do you have any more on there? Is it, okay. I wanted to show you there. So what I saw is I saw in that city, in Chimney Rock, they actually had the Army Corps of Engineers and the Hundred First Airborne were actually deployed there and helping that, the residents there. Heavy presence of National Guard. But most importantly, I think to relate to you all is that the resilience of, nobody thinks they're a victim up there. They they are determined people. They are proud of who they are. They're North Carolina's best. And it's just, it makes you humble to think all the wonderful things we have and we're not disrupted. And they literally lost everything, literally. And and they're ready, they're ready to pick up and continue. So I want to thank the group I went with, Baptist on Missions. There are a number of organizations that you can donate to. Samaritan's Purse is another good one. But I would ask that, you know, take the time to go to their website and look at maybe you want to donate or provide an opportunity to help these people. It's going to be a long term, this is generational, a hundred-year event, and this is going to be a generational fix. It's not, nothing's going to occur quickly there, and winter is approaching. So I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to to share this, and I'm very thankful for my home church, Pleasant Grove, for allowing a group of us to go up there, and I'm thankful for the law enforcement personnel that allowed us to actually get a good look at what really happened. So thank you very much, board. It was good to go to the Fireman's Parade, so I agree, that was awesome. This board has been very supportive of all of our volunteers, and as you know, that that we've, we have done a lot over the last few years to move that that forward, and we're thankful for that. So thank you very much, board.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Gooch?
Thank you. The devastation in western part of the state is is awful. It takes a lot of effort on part of everyone. I've been amazed at the outpouring from within our county, not only with the county emergency management, nine-one-one, sheriff's department. We've also had churches involved, we've had a lot of different organizations, and we've had individuals that loaded up generators and such to take to take up there. And we're in a critical time for the for the people who are displaced because we're we're entering the cold months. It's going to, they're going to need heaters and generators, and it's it's a lot left to be done. And please, everyone, just keep, keep the people in western North Carolina in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Jay?
Just like to, one thing echo Commissioner Gooch about the ones up in the western end of the county, and thank our county. Our county have really stepped up to the plate. We have trucks leaving every week, taking supplies and stuff up there. And we still have, we're still having different ones, different groups contributing every week, and we appreciate it. We, to me, it's saying that Granville County is saying, we love our brothers and sisters, and it could have been us. But we thank, it was not us, but we are helping other counties in this situation. Because like I always said, it's could have, it could have been us, and we never know when, because we don't live in a glass house. But thank each and everyone that taken a part doing that. We appreciate you. And also that giving her candy and going at the children, at the, at the children home, going around, going around a little short bend, which just wasn't it. But we enjoyed it. And then we rushed down to this, to, to, to the sun in the county and throwing her candy. We enjoyed it. We, I'm telling you, I think they just, I think the adults get more enjoyment, just as much enjoyment as the children do when we throw candy out to them, and we appreciate it. Also, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to, to have picnic in the park. Sheriff cooked up for the senior centers at the, sheriff department cooked up at the senior center at the park in the stove wall. It was great. You missed some great ribs, and it was good, and we thank you. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay. Commissioner Wilford?
Nothing tonight. Everybody said everything.
Outstanding. All right, that'll leave me. So lots of busy stuff going on. I know we had the four H animal show here. Always fun to see the kids out with their borrowed livestock. Wish my goats behaved as well as the goats that were here for show, but it was cute to see. As well as STEM hosted a great trail state hike this past Saturday. Appreciate Commissioner Jay and Commissioner Hinman, you know, coming down and picking up Commissioner May, myself, and Commissioner Gooch for the Fireman's Day Parade. It kind of kicks off the parade season, and I hope that each of you will, as we move forward with the Christmas holidays, remember the the reason for the season. But that's words not lost on y'all, because I know you do. Tomorrow, we've got the Crime Stoppers banquet. It's going to be hosted down there at Pleasant Grove Baptist Church in Creedmore on Highway fifty-six. Next week, Friday, right here at the Expo Center is the Granville County Chambers Cluck and Chuck. So I think there's probably still tickets available for that. If you're inclined to so support that, it'd be great to see people out for that. All kinds of lots of fun stuff happening this time of year. I mean, we've got, the holidays are upon us, you know, it's going to be, the end of the year is near. So last month, at the start of our October meetings, I mentioned about, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I wanted to mention that again because it's incredibly important. And in the breast cancer world, they have what's called ABCD, After Breast Cancer Diagnosis. Incredibly important stuff for our ladies out there. Make sure you have your mammograms as you're supposed to and and check those areas that you're supposed to with self-exams. Please, if you go unchecked or unevaluated, or if you're diagnosed and untreated, you're going to die. So incredibly important. Totally treatable in most cases, unless you have the BRCA gene, but strikes home in my family. Two years ago, you know, I appreciate this board's support as I went through that with my wife Liz and, you know, blessed to have absolute, a great recovery on her part. But again, Breast Cancer Awareness Month for for those ladies, please make sure you check the titties. So the the next thing we had, I want to talk about was the peace poll really quickly. And we don't normally take public comment and handle stuff in the same meeting, but I don't know if we need to have a board action on that. Seems reasonable enough.
I would like to make that motion since I am a rotarian. So yes, I would like to make the motion that we put a peace column up at the end of the courthouse.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Hinman and seconded by Commissioner Jay that we allow management and our development services folks to work through with rotarians in Oxford to figure out a good place for their peace poll that they want to put in there. Is there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Sorry for my jumbled words there. All right, that's all I have this evening. Are there any other matters to come before this board?
Mr. Chairman, none, other than I just had my back somewhat to Garrett. Just want to add him to thank him for all the work he's done there at the Orange Street Community Center as well. Thank you, Garrett, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And then we do have a request for a closed session as allowed by General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A four for economic development, and it is to discuss matters relating to a location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area.
I'll make that motion if we can have a ten-minute bio break.
We certainly can. We've got a motion by Commissioner Hinman and seconded by Commissioner Wilford to go into an executive session for matters of economic development follow after a ten-minute bio break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries.